Good evening. I'd like to call the March 28th legislative session, Salisbury City Council, to order. I'd like to welcome everybody, both here and on PAC 14. Please turn your cellphones off, and if you need to make a call, please exit the room and make the call in the hallway. Should an emergency arise during the evening, please exit the room, make a left-hand turn and a right, and go down the stairs. Should that exit be blocked, go out and make a right-hand turn and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators. And if you need assistance, please let us know. At this time, I'd like to call Reverend Brian Albert to the podium of the Bethesda United Methodist Church for the invocation. Reverend Albert?
Please join me in prayer. We'll wait a minute. Good morning, folks. Let's pray. The sovereign God of the universe, help us to remember that you have created and sustain all things. Help us to remember that before the first human foot set foot on this shore, it is yours. The land, the rivers, have been given to us as a sacred trust. What we call our river, our city, our community, is a trust that we will pass on to others. So, Lord, tonight, I ask that you would grant wisdom, guidance, to the men and women on both sides of the table. As important issues are brought up and discussions are brought forward, that your insight, your wisdom, your discernment, your peace, your clarity would prevail. That not only good decisions be made tonight, Lord, but sometimes the hard decisions, that's what's best. Lord, that takes courage, and again, I look to you and I ask for that. May there be clarity. May questions be brought forward in simplicity, and may resolutions be come to in just accord. We ask for your blessing, Lord, God of order and peace. And I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Please stand and join me in place of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have a proclamation.
Good evening, Mr. President, Council.
Good evening.
So, this evening, we have a, we do have a proclamation, and I believe we have a guest with us this evening as well. And in just a moment, after I read this proclamation, I'm going to ask her to come up. But as you may know, the month of April, and you've been dealing with fair housing legislation for a couple of months, the month of April is Fair Housing Month. And in recognition of that, we have a proclamation, and I'm going to read that. So whereas the Fair Housing Act has prohibited discrimination in housing, and whereas equal opportunity for all is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin, and whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability, and whereas the Shore Housing Resource Board, a private nonprofit organization operating in Somerset, Worcester, and Wycomico Counties, consists of volunteers representing business, government, nonprofit agencies, and individuals committed to promoting and educating fair housing, and whereas the Shore Housing Resource Board strives daily to make fair housing a reality for every resident, whereas the zoning ordinance of the City of Salisbury is intended to affirmatively further fair housing in the City of Salisbury by abiding by the provisions of the Fair Housing Act of 1968 as amended, promoting fair housing choice for all residents in the City of Salisbury, assuring the rights of all individuals that are identified as members of a protected class by the federal government, and preventing discrimination in housing based on a person's race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, or handicap. Therefore, I, Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Fair Housing Month in our city, and I encourage all residents to participate in creating and promoting fair housing opportunities for everyone in their community. And I'd like to invite a board member of the Shore Housing Resource Board, Ms. Wanda Fields, to come forward and accept the proclamation, and share a little bit about your organization, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you so much. I would certainly like to thank the City of Salisbury, the mayor, for this proclamation, declaring April Fair Housing Month. As you all understand how important housing is in everyone's community, everybody needs a decent and affordable house. And so fair housing is extremely important. We, on behalf of the Shore Housing Resources Board, we're one of 500 community boards nationwide promoting fair housing. We try to, and it's comprised of businesses, individuals, nonprofit organizations, and agencies, that get together to assist in this endeavor. We certainly thank the City of Salisbury for all they do. We educate, we train landlords and anyone else in the private and public sector regarding housing and the laws with respect to housing. So we certainly do, on behalf of our President of the Board, Willum Harden, and the Shore Housing Community Resources Board, again, we thank you for this proclamation. Thank you. Let me also, while I'm here, tell you how you can reach us. We do have a website, and we can be reached at www.shorehousingrb.com, or you can mail things to a post office box, 971 Salisbury, Merleman. And again, that's Shore Housing Resources Board. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please thank the board on behalf of the council. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Nicholas, good evening.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have resolution, we have actually the March 14th regular meeting minutes, resolution number 2607, accepting a donation of a wolf enclosure from the Salisbury Zoo Commission for the Salisbury Zoo Logical Park, resolution number 2608, accepting a donation of a lovely little library at the Boundless Playground from Girl Scout Troop 634, resolution number 2609, approving the appointment of Michael Dwyer to the Mayor's Council in Support of People with Disabilities for term ending March 2018, resolution number 2610, approving the appointment of Stephen House to the Mayor's Council in Support of People with Disabilities for term ending March 2018, resolution number 2611, approving the reappointment of Susan U. Jones to the Zoo Commission for term ending March 2019, resolution number 2612, approving the acquisition of a 2003 Chrysler 300M vehicle forfeited by the Court for Wycomico County, Maryland, to the Salisbury Police Department, resolution number 2613, approving the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for the purpose of expending grant funds in the amount of $121,102, and resolution number 2614, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the U.S. Department of Justice's Bureau for Justice Assistance for the purpose of expending grant funds in the amount of $27,871. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now call a question. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And if I could, if I could point out, I guess a thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Don Ward of Millsboro, who made the donation to the zoo for the wolf enclosure. So we appreciate that donation.
Yes, and also, I'm not sure if any of these individuals are here, but if you are, would you please stand? Michael Dyer, Stephen House, Susan Jones, we'd like to congratulate them and thank them for their volunteering for the commission. Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion for the award of bids.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Yes.
And a second? Good evening. How are you?
Good. Good evening. First item this evening is award of bid for contract 116-16. The Salisbury, City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Public Works Department to solicit bids for contract 116-16, Robbins Avenue Lift Station repairs. This contract called for two specific repairs. First, to stop water infiltration into the wet well by sealing an existing crack with a chemical grout. Second, to grout all joints on the inside of the wet well. The procurement department followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times, on the City of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising on the State of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. A total of three vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of February 16, 2016, at 2:30 p.m. You can see in your packet that we received bids from Aqua Infrastructure Rehabilitation, Clean Venture, and JJID Incorporated. Funds are available in the noted account, 86083-523600, wastewater treatment plant skilled services. Since Aqua Infrastructure Rehabilitation was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, reference checks yielded favorable replies, and the funds have been confirmed as available. The procurement department requests council's approval to award this contract, 116-16, to Aqua Infrastructure Rehabilitation in the amount of $33,000.
Questions or comments?
Couple of questions.
Okay.
One is, the numbers don't add up. The base bid is 28,500, and the contingents were five. Shouldn't that be 33,500?
Sorry, you know what? I have an extra five. It should be just a straight 28,000, not 28,500. My apologies. Okay. Is that the only one that didn't add up?
Yeah. Oh, I see on the second page, it's not like that. It's just on that first page.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I just saw that. I didn't even see it when I read through it before. The other one is, that's a wild difference between them.
Were you able to identify what?
I knew you were going to ask that question.
I know you did. And that's why my team. So was Mira.
Yes, Aqua Infrastructure specializes type of repair. And we were pleasantly surprised when they came in to give us a bid. What they are going to do is, well, let me back up a step. The other contractors typically, what they do would be set up bypass pumping, and traffic control, and everything associated with that, in order to draw the well down and keep it down while they do these repairs. Aqua Infrastructure, what they're going to be able to do is they come in and do it at nighttime, and they're going to use Vector trucks, so they won't have to use the bypass pumping actions. Keep it down and get their repairs, do it in, so you don't have all that other effort that goes into it. Because of their experience, they've been able to do that successfully when we checked the references. So we got a really good deal with them doing that.
Didn't we do something with them before? Because I remember that same rationale.
I don't know if it's that firm.
Okay. I don't even remember what the project was, but it was the same thing. The others basically do it and then sublet it. Maybe it was architecture or something. And, but these people specialize in it, and that's all.
Yeah. Basically, it's a pump station with submersible pumps in it, and then it's a precast concrete, so you have the joints as they stack up the units. And we've got a big leak going through one of the joints. That's what they'll do with the polyurethane resin grout. And then once they've got that in, they're going to grout all the other joints, so it doesn't migrate to another spot.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
That was my question.
Okay.
The next item is a request for a declaration of surplus for bicycles. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare 110 bicycles as surplus. All items were found forfeited or unclaimed, and attempts to return items to known owners have been unsuccessful. It's the request of the Salisbury Police Department that items are either sold at auction or donated locally. And in your packet, I did give you a detailed list of the items, and I did give a breakdown on which ones they thought could be donated and were in good shape to donate. The procurement division requests council's approval to declare the noted items surplus and to allow the Salisbury Police Department to dispose of them as requested.
Questions? Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll call the question for the award of bids. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. I don't see Mr. Stevens, as I believe that Ms. Lance will do the honors.
Yes. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. I'd like to have a motion to approve resolution number 2615. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Great. Resolution number 2615, resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, for the purpose of accepting the submission of RFP 04-15, rebid from Green Street Housing LLC for the redevelopment of Parking Lot 30. Whereas the mayor and city council have determined that there is a surplus city-owned property that should be redeveloped, and that there is strong public need for increased infill development in the city. And whereas the City of Salisbury declared Lot 30 surplus property on November 10, 2014, and whereas the City of Salisbury pursuant to SC 168 and Charter 2.36 for the city code has the right to offer at public sale surplus property and make awards in the best interest of the city. And whereas the city-owned surplus or unused property should be developed, not only in consideration of the highest bid price, but in consideration of the type of development proposed. And such development should require a commitment from the purchaser to develop such property in a manner which will raise the city's tax base and be in the best interest of citizens in the City of Salisbury. And whereas the city has determined that it is its best interest of the citizens of the city to sell the city's surplus property known as Parking Lot 30, and whereas the City of Salisbury advertised for proposals for the purchase of and redevelopment of Parking Lot 30 three times, from March 14, 2016, to March 16, 2016, and responses were due by March 23, 2016. And whereas no additional responses were received, and whereas the City of Salisbury was permitted by Green Street Housing to accept their original proposal dated September 30, 2015, for the redevelopment purchase of Lot 30, and is now selecting Green Street Housing LLC proposal as the winning proposal. Whereas the City of Salisbury is in agreement to sell Parking Lot Number 30 for $10,001 to Green Street Housing LLC, following the execution of a disposition contract with terms acceptable to the city on or before May 30, 2016, as finally approved by the city solicitor. Now therefore be resolved by the city council in regular session date today, that the proposal submitted by Green Street Housing LLC dated September 9, 2015, for RFP 0415, rebid disposition and development of Parking Lot 30 is selected as the winning proposal on the conditions that the parties on or before May 30, 2016, execute a disposition contract with such terms and conditions as may be approved by the city and the city solicitor, with the purchase price being $10,001.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I think I got it, but just in case. No.
Mr. President, I just, I was out of town on Friday, or I would have gotten this to your attention sooner. I just think, for clarity's sake, I would like to amend the resolution in one place. Under the "be it further enacted and resolved" section, the second clause begins with "and that the award be conditional upon," and I would strike the word "and" there, and then put the word "and" after, put a comma instead of a period at the end of the sentence, and begin, "and that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the said disposition contract." Just to make it perfectly clear that that's what you're authorizing. Once approved.
What line numbers?
This would be both in 49 and 50. It says that it's being approved with terms acceptable to the city and to the city solicitor, but the words "and the mayor is authorized to execute" don't appear anywhere in here, and I just think that they should say that to make it perfectly clear.
Make a motion to make that adjustment?
We have a motion to amend, and we have a second. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Now we'll vote on the resolution. Call the motion for resolution number 2615. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. I now entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2616. So moved. We have a motion and a second.
Okay. Resolution number 2616, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, authorizing the waiver of the building permit fee in connection with a roof replacement for the Village of Hope structure located at 1001 Lake Street. Whereas the Village of Hope is a nonprofit and non-denominational organization that provides shelter to homeless, to homeless women and children, and whereas, due to its age and exposure to the elements, the Village of Hope is in need of a total roof replacement. And whereas the City of Salisbury issues building permits for re-roofing projects as required by the International Building Code 2015 edition, and whereas in order to replace the roof, the Village of Hope will need to obtain a building permit for the city's building, from the city's building permit, permitting and inspections department, and whereas the mayor has recommended that the city waive the building permit fee for the Village of Hope, and whereas city policy requires the approval of the city council in order to waive any fee that is associated with a project not being fully executed directly by the city. Now therefore be it resolved that on this day in March, the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, does approve the waiver of the building permit fee of $636.13 for the property known as the Village of Hope located at 1001 Lake Street in connection with the roof replacement at the location.
That second 13 will be stricken.
Line 28, I guess. Do we need to make an amendment to that, or?
No. I think that's editorial.
Just editorial.
Just full disclosure, I serve on the Transitional Living Board at the Village of Hope. I don't get any personal benefit or gain from it, so I'm not conflicted out, but I did want to disclose that.
Very good. Anything else? If not, I'll call the motion to approve resolution number 2616. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. I will now entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2617. So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second?
Another longer one. Resolution number 2617, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, for the purpose of accepting the submission of RFP 04-16, bid from Hannah Family Investments for the sale of surplus real property at 1044 South Tower Road, and demolition of the abandoned water tower structure. Whereas the mayor and city council have determined that there is a surplus city-owned property that should be redeveloped, and there is a strong public need for increased infill and development in the city. And whereas the City of Salisbury declared 1044 South Tower Road, Salisbury, Maryland, surplus property on April 13, 2015, and whereas the City of Salisbury pursuant to SC 16-8 and Chapter 2.36 of the city code has the right to offer at public sale surplus property and make awards in the best interest of the city, and whereas city-owned surplus or unused property should be developed, not only in consideration of the highest bid price, but in consideration of the type of development proposed, and such development should require a commitment from the purchaser to develop such property in a manner which will raise the city's tax base and be in the best interest of the citizens of the City of Salisbury. And whereas the city has determined that it is in its best interest of the citizens of the city to sell the city's surplus property known as 1044 South Tower Road, and whereas the City of Salisbury advertised for proposals for the purchase of and redevelopment of 1044 South Tower Road three times, from September 16, 2015, to September 18, 2015. And whereas the City of Salisbury is in agreement to sell 1044 South Tower Road for $1,000 to Hannah Family Investments, following the execution of a disposition contract with terms acceptable to the city on or before June 1, 2016, as finally approved by the city solicitor. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, by the Council of the City of Salisbury in regular session on this date, that the proposal submitted by Hannah Family Investments dated October 7, 2015, for RFP 0416, bid sale of surplus real property, is selected as the winning proposal for parcel two of the RFP, in the condition that the parties on or before June 1, 2016, execute a disposition contract with such terms and conditions as may be approved by the city and the city solicitor, the purchase price shall be $1,000. There's a bug.
Same issue with this one?
Same, exact same additions, but this time on line 46 and 47.
So moved.
Second. Okay, so let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Now, if there's no other comments, we'll call for the motion. Okay, motion to approve resolution number 2617. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Only two breaths. That was pretty good. And almost swallowed a bug.
You saw it, right?
I saw it.
Distracted me.
That's because I shoved them away from me.
That was good.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2380.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Tillman.
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2016 general fund budget to appropriate funding for a community outreach addiction team and youth substance use prevention initiative. Whereas the city desires to facilitate and support the reduction of substance use, and whereas the city believes that investing in a community outreach program, outreach and addiction team will benefit the city, and whereas the city has estimated $35,000 is needed for such program, and whereas the city also has estimated that $5,000 is needed to fund youth substance use prevention initiative, and whereas the city's FY 2016 budget does not include a suitable appropriation to fund the $40,000 required for the aforementioned, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's FY 2016 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase the current year surplus account 01000-469810 by $40,000, an increase in the, this will be the police department, I'm guessing, that's the correct one?
Yes.
I don't have the finance people here, the police department, by $40,000. This ordinance was introduced and read at the meeting of the council of the City of Salisbury this blank day of 2016.
Questions? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, if I may. Obviously, this is a first reading. I realize that. I know there's a second vote to be taken. But that being said, wanted to acknowledge that this would go hand in hand with, I believe, $125,000 from the county to fully fund for the remainder of FY 16 and all of FY 17, the community outreach action team as designed by the Health Department and the State's Attorney's Office. It's not really public yet. It won't be for at least another week or so. Actually, probably not until after a second reading. Obviously, we're talking about it in the public, but the rollout of the plan, the execution, will be discussed soon from Mr. Masarello's office and Ms. Brewster's office.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From my perspective, this is one of the most important things that we're going to do this year. Without a doubt, we have, we have serious issues regarding substance abuse or use. And this is a good start. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
The only thing that I do have to say is, basically the same thing that you just said. This is a good start. This is a good program to initiate, because we need to start with our youth, with the drug addiction and the problems that we do have in our community, because as I can see as of, was it last week before last, we had like 16 ODs and six deaths. And Salisbury needs help. We really need help. So this program- So this program will really somewhat help us get on our way, on the beating path to fighting drug addiction with young people, even up to the adults. So I thank you.
Thank you. Nothing else, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two-three-eight-zero, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-three-eight-one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Tillman.
Okay, this is a ordinance to amend the budget, and basically in a nutshell, if you need more detail than this, you'll have to ask somebody who knows more about the project. But this is basically shifting funds from the general obligation bonds to another fund that is under the general obligation bond, and then reducing the second one that I just referred to, and taking the non-general obligation funds out and putting them into that third project, so that's as I understand it. Anyway.
And which shell is the ball under?
It, I believe it's all legal, and we.
No, no, it is. We have to do this by the, by the numbers, and it has to be moved officially.
It's officially moving things in the right slot.
It's not spending extra money or more money, it's just moving it to a different place.
Yes, and, and so that we don't interfere with or mess up the bond money, it has to be done in this fashion. It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY two thousand and fifteen Water and Sewer Capital Project Budget to reallocate funding for the Fitzwater Street Lift Station and Paleo Well Number Three projects, whereas an ordinance number two-two-eight-seven identified the funding sources for capital project appropriations in the FY two thousand and fifteen budget, whereas the funding source for the portion of the Paleo Well Number Three project was identified as existing bonds, and whereas the Paleo Well Three project is not a named project in the bond pool, and the Fitzwater Lift Station project is a named project in the bond pool, and whereas, at the advice of Bond Council, Finance Department, and Public Works Director, recommended reallocating the funding sources such that the Paleo Well Number Three project does not need to be added to the bond pool. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year two thousand and fifteen Water and Sewer Capital Project Budget be hereby amended as follows. Number one, with a decrease in the North Division Sewer Construction by one million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, account nine-six-one-one-two-dash-five-one-three-oh-two-six-dash-five-five-oh-one-two. A decrease in the North Division Sewer Engineering by forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-two cents, account nine-six-one-two-two-dash-five-one-three-oh-two-zero-dash-five-five-oh-one-two. An increase in the Fitzwater PS Construction by one million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-two cents, account nine-six-one-one-two-dash-five-one-three-oh-two-six-dash-five-five-oh-one-one. Increase in the Fitzwater PS Engineering by three hundred and ten thousand dollars, account And then a decrease in the Fitzwater PS Construction by one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, account nine-seven-oh-one-oh-dash-five-one-three-oh-two-six-dash-five-five-zero-one-one. And an increase in the Paleo Well Number Three Construction by one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, account nine-seven-oh-one-oh-dash-five-one-three-oh-two-six-dash-four-nine-oh-four-zero.
Questions, comments? It's now a call for a motion to approve the ordinance number two-three-eight-one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-three-eight-two.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second.
This is an easy one.
Comparatively.
An ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY two thousand and sixteen general fund budget to appropriate the funds received from the recovery and recycling of brass shell casings at the Salisbury Police Range to purchase service weapons. Whereas members of the Salisbury Police Department have retrieved, stored, and recycled the brass shell casings from all firearms training at Salisbury Police Range, and whereas the recycling of these brass shell casings through Delmarva Recycling, Inc., has produced a monetary return for the efforts put forth, and whereas the Delmarva Recycling has paid the city one thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents, which was placed in the general fund, and whereas the Salisbury Police Department has used for the funds received from the recycling brass shell casings in the Small Tools Account, two-one-zero-two-one-dash-five-four-six-zero-zero-nine, which is used in part to purchase service weapons for new police officers. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year two thousand and sixteen general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Number one, increase in the general fund revenue, Delmarva Recycling, account by one thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents, and an increase in the police department budget by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments? Now I'll call for a motion to approve ordinance number two-three-eight-two. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Ms. Nichols, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
We do not. Mr. Mayor, anything for the good of the order?
Yes, sir.
There may be some people that didn't sign up.
Anybody that would like to speak, that didn't sign up?
Mine personally.
This wasn't the most riveting of meetings we've ever had. I mean, I'm like, you're kinda like, it's really hot here.
Just a reminder, it's first Saturday this weekend, so come out Saturday, four to seven P.M. There's some stickers and refrigerator magnets over there. We have amp studio and J-Flow beatbox, and we're having the egg hunt during first Saturday because it was canceled due to inclement weather.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, no other business? Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned.
So, that's interesting. Yeah, sorry. No, no, it's not.
Well, did she say anything negative about it, like?
No, but I feel.